All right, good evening, everybody. It is 6:30 PM. Today is Tuesday, June 20th. This is a regular board meeting of the Olin Tangi Schools Board of Education. I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Dr. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
All right, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We did add an executive session at the end of the meeting to go over, and we'll get to it when we get there, but to go over the employment of a public official. So with that kind of a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Can you have a second, please?
A second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, the next agenda item is the Board Presence Report. I don't have much because I thought we were meeting Thursday for lunch today. But Mr. Dabberco was kind enough to remind me we are meeting tonight. So does anyone have anything from committees? No, nothing? All right, let's keep moving. We'll go to our first presentation item, one of my favorite presentation items every year, the food service update. Ms. Bethany Linco.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Board members, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Jenkins, and Olin Tangi community, I am Bethany Linco. I am the food service supervisor here at Olin Tangi. And to keep with my tradition, I did bring some snacks for everyone, especially if you didn't know there's a board meeting. I'm not sure what you ate before you got here. But so these are some either new items last year or upcoming new items that are specific for school food service. So the first I have in my basket is donut holes. So they are a breakfast item manufactured by a company called Super Bakery. There is powdered and there is blueberry. I recommend the blueberry and so do my children. And then I have some roasted chickpeas that are kettle corn flavored. So these are actually count as a meat meat alternate or as a vegetable because it is a chickpea. They're roasted and taste like kettle corn. So we're going to be utilizing these as a vegetable because a lot of kids don't like their bean peas, as you could maybe imagine. So hopefully this will be something that the kids will enjoy. And then we have some dried pineapple, which counts as a fruit, and then some trail mix, a sweet one, and a kind of a spicy hot one that counts as one meat 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 alternate and half a cup of fruit. So I'll pass the basket. Please help yourself, don't be shy. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
I thought he was going for the donut hole.
Well, again, blueberry, you wouldn't think the blueberry is the best, but it is. But powdered is also good. But thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. So this is just my annual update of the food service department and kind of what happened last year and what we're looking forward to this upcoming school year. So just as an overview, at Olin Tangi, we are a national school lunch and school breakfast program sponsor, which means that we are overseen by the United States Department of Agriculture at a federal level. And then locally, the Ohio Department of Education, Office of Nutrition oversees us from the local level, offering us guidance, doing audits of our department. We are meant to operate as a nonprofit department. We have 25 onsite kitchens, soon to be 26 with Berlin Middle School opening, about 106 food service, sorry, 25 food service managers, 106 food service workers. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank my staff that work in the kitchens every day. They're the ones that are, you know, producing all of the food items, making sure that they are appealing, that they are tasty, that they're safe for all of our customers. They all do a fabulous job. They're so dedicated. They take a lot of pride in their work. And I just want to thank them for just the efforts that they do every day for our kids and for our customers. Then we have six leadership staff. So we have one maintenance position that is Josh Hershey. He does a wonderful job of maintaining and fixing all of our equipment. As you can imagine, with 25 buildings, there's a lot of equipment that has to be maintained and preventative maintenance completed on it. Then we have two administrative assistants. So we have Kim Profio and Stacy Quinn, who are in the office. They do a lot of the paperwork with paying the bills, all the ordering, processing our free and reduced meal applications. They are wonderful. Kim was actually named our classified employee of the year for last year. So she still holds that title until we announce the next one at convocation. And then we have two assistant supervisors, Michelle Palo and Michelle Mancini. Both of them were former food service managers, so they assist in the daily operations of the kitchens, hiring, staffing, and just do a great job supporting the buildings and then the one supervisor being myself. So here's a recap for our school year. So the big challenge we had with the past '22, '23 school year was transitioning back to our normal pre-pandemic operations. So if you remember, the past two years, meals were available at no cost to all students. This past school year was the year we had to transition back to eligibility-based pricing. So students were either paid, reduced, or free. And that first table I have there are our Olin Tangi-approved meal prices. So for breakfast, it's $1.50. A reduced-priced student pays 30 cents, and a free student pays no cost. Then our lunch meal prices are $2.50 at elementary, $2.75 at middle school, and then $3 or $3.50 at high school. For a paid student, 40 cents for reduced, and then no cost for students that are approved for free meals. And then that second table I have are our federal reimbursement that we receive back for the federal government. So for every meal that we serve to students that meet the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Program guidelines, we receive those reimbursement rates back from the federal government. What was nice this year, the federal government, Congress passed additional funds that we got for each meal that we served. So they approved an additional 15 cents for each breakfast, an additional 40 cents for each lunch that we served. That additional reimbursement is going away next year. It hasn't been approved by Congress. I have not heard any discussion that it would be approved. But the rates you see there, the 50 cents for breakfast at paid, the $1.96 for reduced students for breakfast, and $2.26 for a free student, that includes the additional 15 cents. Same with the lunch, the 85 for a paid student, the $4.01 for reduced students, and $4.41 includes additional 40 cents that we won't be receiving next school year. To continue with last school year, this next graph shows you the amount of meals that we served for the completed school year. So on average, I have two columns, an average served per day and then our yearly total. So for breakfast, we averaged 1,652 breakfasts per day, for a total of 282,448 breakfasts. Lunches, we averaged 10,797 per day, for a total of 1,846,277 lunches. And then à la carte, we use a formula to get our à la carte equivalents, which we translate to meals. We average about 7,356 à la carte meal equivalents per day, with over 1.2 million yearly served. So our total meals that we serve on average per day is 19,805. And then our yearly total was 3,386,684 meals. So with that, with all of our meals, that's how most of our revenue then comes in through. So our revenue, our average revenue per day was $64,846. That includes that additional reimbursement we were receiving from the federal government, which equated to about $4,500 in additional revenue per day that we got because of those additional reimbursements. Our expenses, including overhead, averaged about $62,000 per day. So we were able to operate in the black for this school year. However, had not been for those additional reimbursements, we would have been operating in the red. So it really helped to get that additional money from the federal government to keep our program whole. We did receive some additional supply chain assistance funds from USDA. So we got a second round of funding just this past April. And there are going to be some additional rounds, which I'll talk about for next school year in another slide. With these supply chain assistance funds, the key with them is USDA stipulates they have to be used on domestic, domestic unprocessed or minimally processed food items. So things like milk is a pretty predominant one that people, school districts are using these funds for. So those are just the stipulations with USDA with those funds. We did experience some challenges for the past school year. So as you can imagine, we did have increased food costs. I'm sure, you know, everyone sees it when they go to the grocery store and talk to your neighbors. So I looked at our overall food costs since the 2018, '19 school year, because that was our last kind of normal school year, pre-pandemic. And we've seen an increase of 26% in the cost of food since then. Our supply costs, which would be paper products, anything that's part of the meal that you're not actually going to eat, we've seen about a 21% increase in those supply costs. We're seeing a lot of our equipment start to age. As our buildings are aging, so is our equipment. So maintaining that equipment can be costly and then replacing it. As I've been getting quotes, some equipment's almost doubled in price since pre-pandemic due to supply chain, things along those lines. And then our other challenge was re-educating the Olin Tangi community on the meal program since meals were available at no cost for the past two years and just educating families about it, why we were going back to it, and working with them through that process. So planning for next school year, happy to say we will not be asking for a lunch price increase for the '23, '24 school year. So prices will remain the same as they were on the previous slide. There is, the Senate approved in their budget that, that the state budget would, would cover the cost of reduced meals for families. So the Senate, sorry, the House had that in their budget, the Senate did not. So they're negotiating now to see if that will go in the, in the final document or not. That wouldn't be any additional revenue for our department. It would just mean that families that were approved for reduced meals wouldn't have to pay that 30 and 40 cents that they are required to pay. The state would fund that 30 and 40 cents. So we will see what happens there. We'll monitor that. Like I said, we're going to lose that additional reimbursement at the federal level, so that additional 40 cents and 15 cents is, will not be there next year. But we have been approved for rounds three and four of the supply chain assistance funds. Round three, I think they said will come in October, and they had, round four just got announced late, I think, end of May. So we haven't received any guidance on that. But again, it'll be the same, that those funds have to be used on domestic minimally or unprocessed food items. We plan on reopening all of our deli stations at the high school level. So that was something that the high schools had pre-pandemic, but then went after COVID due to staffing, due to the amount of meals we were serving with free meals. It just wasn't something operationally that we felt we could achieve. But now that we have more stability when it comes to staffing and for supply chain, we're going to be reopening those in the high school level, which will be exciting. And then obviously, we have opening the kitchen at Berlin Middle School. So excited about next year. And that is all I have for you guys. Obviously, I will take questions. And if you're ever in our kitchens and want to stop in for lunch or breakfast, please feel to stop in and see what the lovely employees are doing there. So what questions do you have?
Any questions?
One comment. I want to congratulate you on the folks that you put in front of our students. I was visiting one of our elementary schools. I don't want to call them out and embarrass them, but there was a young lady who had some additional needs she had to go through before everybody else got in there. And your, your lunch person, it was, it was like one of those moments where you're like, oh, my gosh, this lady's the most wonderful person in the world. Because you want to let the student do as much as they can, but you also want to support them. So I want to congratulate you because your students do, I mean, your, your people do take care of our students at a very high level. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, they do. They care a lot.
My quick back-of-the-napkin math is that's, with the number of food service workers that we have, it's about 30,000 meals per person per year, which is just mind-blowing. So that's an amazing amount of work, and thank you for that. Just a quick question on, do you have offhand about the percentage of families that get free and reduced lunch?
We run about 6% to 7% free and reduced students.
Great, thank you.
On the no price change, do you have a sense of what other districts may be doing?
There was a survey, from what I've been able to see, most are not going to be raising their lunch prices or meal prices, including breakfast.
Any else?
Just that my daughters prefer the OLSD lunch on the daily rather than anything I can possibly pack for them, so kudos.
Thank you, thank you.
And I grew up in my parents' restaurant, I don't care.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the snacks. All right, next discussion items, Mr. Gordon, Facility Use Update.
Good evening. My staff said I have to try to match Bethany and start bringing something when I present, little tape measures or some other, some other thing. I haven't figured out what it is yet, but.
Vest.
The first item tonight is the Facility Use Update. Just a quick summary of what we're attempting to do. We have not raised facility use fees for several years. We had put together a plan for raising fees, and COVID kind of got in the way of that. We did the first raise, we had a six-year plan. So we're getting back to that. What this change does that you have in front of you is increase the hourly rental rate for buildings for all groups approximately 15%. Biggest driver of that's increased utility cost. We increased the hourly rate for staffing in all categories. Again, our staffing costs have gone up. We took the average staff member in each category and that set that as our, as our rate, so. And then we increased all the field and stadium costs for all the groups, again, about 15%. And like everything else, the field maintenance costs have increased. We're getting into a lot of fence replacement, ball-diamond mix, those things, just as Bethany mentioned about food service and about our next discussion. Those are also an aging items, our fences and our facilities, outside facilities. And then the last item on there was the OIA contract, which is, has the same, it matches the fee schedule. And the increases we had there, we've also included in the OIA contract. And we have moved both of those to the July 1 approval for schedule, so that the organizations that use our facilities have those, so as they're planning for their next year of events, they can incorporate the increased fees into their, into their prices for their participants. So that was the reason for the move from January to July. Did you have any questions on, on that?
Questions?
I'm curious about something, and you don't know this is coming, so if you don't know, it's okay. In your contract, you talk about like how many folks are involved in their groups. I'm curious how many, because they've got to reach bazillions of kids. I know that's not a number, but I'm curious how many kids, because you don't have to talk too long to people in our community. Somebody's playing something with OIA.
Yeah.
Any idea like how many kids are, they serve at all?
I do not.
All right, no worries. That was not.
I've asked recently about the baseball and softball numbers, which I don't have with me, but I had collected, but I have not collected their full participation. But you're correct, between the volleyball, they're in our facilities for volleyball, they're in our facilities with soccer, baseball, softball.
Basketball.
Basketball. Football program uses our, our facilities as well. So they, they reach across the community. We have a lot of other organizations that are sports-specific that will be from different pockets of the district, you know, some that maybe are in the liberty boundary, and they'll align themselves, say, with a baseball program with that, or orange program, or Berlin High School baseball program. But OIA is the only one that reaches all the way of a nonprofit across the whole district.
Thank you for your hard work balancing all that.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so you can move on to your next discussion item.
All right. The District 20 Year Capital Plan. Just give a brief update. We started this plan, started looking at this back in about 2012, 2013. And the biggest reason was up to that point, people had said, well, Olin Tangi has new facilities. The thing that they were forgetting at that point was we had a, we had a middle school that was built in the 50s. We had a high school that was built in 1990 and in 2013. That was 23 years old. It was already hitting the peak of its, of its life expectancy for things like roofs and mechanical equipment, as well as the, some of the elementaries were approaching 20 years old. So what was considered Olin Tangi new buildings, because we had built so many buildings between 2010 and 2000, I'm sorry, 2000, 2010, we had, we built 15 buildings. So those were new buildings, but we had those buildings that were built before that. What did I do, Dust? There we go. All right. So what's changed since the last update, which was in 2019, prior to going on the ballot in 2020, is we have added three new buildings in Shell Meadows, Berlin High, Berlin Middle School, and Elementary School 17. We've had unprecedented inflation that has happened since 2019 to today's numbers. And our existing buildings have continued to age. Our average age of our buildings is, is 20 years old. If you take Shanahan out of that, we're 18 years. And our oldest middle school, Shanahan, is 70 years now. And we did some updates in 2006, quite a few updates, 2006, 2007, Shanahan, but even since that time, that's 16 years ago. So it's, that has continued to, to age. The other, the other thing that's happened since we did our first assessment in 2013 here is, one of our biggest numbers at that time was asphalt, because again, a lot of our buildings were newer and we were starting to age. So as we did the progression for our capital planning going out, the age progression, we had things that would come on. So our first five years, and second five years, and so now you're 15 years out, and then the 20, you would see increases throughout the, throughout the plan. This one, now we're far enough along that those 15 buildings that were built starting 2000 to 2010 have really now are, you know, the oldest ones are 23 years old, and the newest ones at this point are, are 13 years old. So they're hitting the meat of their replacements. So things that are really now coming on board that weren't there before and is averaged out, that all of them need replacements now is the mechanicals. So your 15-year to 25-year life on your mechanical, you hope to get 20, some will go sooner, some will go a little later, our roofs, a lot of those big cost items. So as you'll, you'll see as we go through, some of those things are really starting to add up and, and are becoming the biggest chunk of what we're going to maintain or what we'll need to maintain our facilities going forward. Give you an idea, and I apologize, I can only reflect up here, so I'm going to use the pointer to go there. This slide, as you can see, we go from '24 to 2043. As we continue to grow, we'll add buildings that aren't included in this, but you can see our categories over here. And I won't spend a lot of time on this page, just giving you an idea of, that we're looking 20 years out. I'm actually going to jump to the next page, which has the totals of what you just looked at. And you can see here our asphalt and concrete repairs at 22 million. Our biggest, we got roofing and building envelope at 53. Technology's 110 million over the life of this. We had a significant jump in the technology last year, as we talked about in our, in our five-year capital plan in December. You see these costs have really jumped up, and over here is our technology, the biggest chunk, and then the others as we move through. So those numbers have really changed. Again, asphalt, I think, was, and bussing was one of the biggest ones previously, and now others have caught up and are starting to, starting to bypass that. What does that number translate into is over the life in 2023 dollars? And I say 2023 dollars to be specific, because we're using today's dollars. So we've captured that inflation between 2019 and 2023, because we're using today's dollars. So we're using those increased pricing. And going forward, we looked at inflation as a, as a 3%. So not, and construction inflation may be a little higher, but other items may be a little lower, so we use that 3% as an average. And you can see what happens to inflation over the life of this plan is, oh, we, we now are at 402 million over the 20 years. So that's a significant jump when you add inflation into this and you're looking 20 years out with your, with your replacements and that cost of the same dollars. What we're currently spending here today is, if you remember, we've, we've got some bond money here that is just over 4 million, four and a half million, that goes away. So we've been supplementing PI costs with some of the bond dollars for the bus replacements, roof and mechanicals. And then on top of the, what we've been spending, which is a little less than we've been collecting, because we've been putting some of that money back. But, so we've had the 5.9 million and then the bond money atop that goes away. So that gives you an idea of where we sit currently with our, with our funds and what we're, what we're currently spending. What that gives us here is, you can see the blue line here, that's inflation. So those are the blue costs we talked about earlier as it goes out. And then this is what we're currently, our projected collections for the levy, our current PI levy going forward. And you can see we have a shortfall in each year. And down here at the bottom, for our 402 million over that time, we're currently collecting 161 of that, or will collect based on what we've had approved currently. Our PI shortfall right now, to fully fund that 20-year outlook is, is 240, almost 241 million dollars. So we, we definitely have a big chunk of funding and maintenance that we have to really take a look at going forward.
What's the inflation rate that we're using for this?
3%.
3%.
Have you always used that 3% or has that increased lately?
Well, the GDP was 2.3%, and with the average of the last few years, it's jumped up to 2.4. But construction, for construction inflation, for our new buildings, we're using 5%. Again, even when we cost that out, Facilities Committee, we looked at the jump in inflation, said, okay, going forward, it's about 5%. So we're looking at some of those items on this list, our construction items, others are band instruments or vehicles, those type of things. So while they've had their big jump, we don't expect them to quite go at the pace of construction. So we use the 3% to try to find some balance, balance in the, in the middle.
Mr. Lester, was your question also about what are we using for PI inflation?
Yeah.
So PI inflation is just following our normal three-year progression of tri-no update versus reappraisal. Normally, what you'll see is in a reappraisal or tri-no update year, we're averaging between 8 and 10%. In between those, you're, you're basically averaging no increases outside of new property. New property on real estate for rezag is somewhere in the neighborhood of around 1 and 3/4 to 2%. For commercial and industrial, the historical rate is actually been closer to 3. But that's 3% on a much lower value, too. Rezag, as we know, is about 86% of what we are. So that follows our traditional path of real estate growth rather than a steady 3, 3, 3. Still turns out pretty nicely, you'll see on the next slide.
Just, sorry, one other question on this. With the, is this taking account just the final product we put in, or does this also account for if there are supply chain delays and we have to put in temporary stuff, like the chillers? If those are running way behind and we have to do something on a temporary basis, is that included in this?
It is not. This is just replacing what we have without supply chain issues or other, other costs, other contingencies included. So this, this slide is, we're trying to give you an idea of what kind of collections we would have to look at, and I'll ask Mr. Jenkins to jump in as we go through this, talking about PI and what our future, future will look like, or may need to look like here. Again, this, the blue line consistently through is that inflated cost annually going up. And then we've modeled two different collection scenarios based on what, using Mr. Jenkins' projection model. One is, is going, both are going on the ballot in 2024 and 2028 for PI funds. And that's where you see the red square around the 2025 and 26 and 29 and 30. So that's ramping up from issues that would be passed in 2024. and 26, and 29 and 30. So that's ramping up from issues that would be passed in 2024 and 2028. Again, these are just for modeling purposes. We've not made any decisions of when to go on the ballot, but trying to model something to, to start the conversation. And you can see that here with one and one, one, one mil in 2024, and adding another mil of PI in 2028, we're at 14 million in 2025. We have a shortfall the first couple of years, 14, 16, 13. And as you ramp up and you get into the outer years, it starts, it starts passing. So it, it starts out behind and we continue, because we're, right now, we're really starting to, at the point where we need to increase a lot of those HVAC and roofing costs. And so this one starts a little slower, but then outpaces or catches up further as we get out on the lower years in the late 2020s and down into the 2030s. The second one in gray is 1.25 mils in 2024, and 3/4 of a mil then in, in 2028. And you can see the number here, the, the 10 million versus 14 in 2025. But this one ramps up a little quicker for us as we, so it matches closer to our, our numbers in blue as you go further out. And then the collections model closer, and they get a little bit ahead, and then they start to, start to drop off, or balance back out. The, this, again, this model does not take into account any future buildings that we build. So if we go on the ballot to build future buildings, this, so why some of it, some of the years were a little bit ahead, the expectation is we continue to add buildings, and the buildings we have continue to age. But this gets us, at least mirrors what we're, what we have, what our assets are currently in, in maintaining those. So these are two scenarios to, to start the discussion.
So, do we have a sense, or is there any kind of like benchmark, let's say, for District R size, this much square footage? Like, what's the right number?
You know, I, I've tried to, I tried to find that number before we did all the work on the very first one, and there's not a number out there. I think it's made from Facilities Committee threw something out that was in the construction road at one time. It's hard to find. And, and I'll give you an example of why I, I think it's difficult. Schools don't truly have that. And when you look at the OFCC, when they build new buildings, they require a maintenance plan to be completed with each new construction project. Those maintenance plans use commercial cleaning costs. So when districts go through those, and in my previous district, we did an OFCC project. So I went through the process with them. And those commercial costs aren't anything I've seen any school district be able to match. That, that they put a number out there that you're supposed to maintain, they have a half mil maintenance that they require you put on your levy when you pass it. And that half mil, depending on what district you're in, usually doesn't keep up with the cost of the buildings. And so then they use the commercial rates for cleaning, for maintenance, and maintenance contracts, and all those things that most districts can't afford. So there's not a good number out there. We, we looked for it quite a bit before we did this. And then talking with other districts and looking back at my experience, the two smaller districts, one of which went through an OFCC project. And they've really struggled down the road to maintain. That half mil hasn't kept up. And those maintenance plans really have been unrealistic. So nobody's come up with a good number to say, this is your cost per square foot. I think the other part of that that happens is when buildings, districts build, we have a pretty conservative model. We have nice buildings, but we don't go way out on a lot of things like terrazzo, or tile on our walls and different things. So every district's gonna be a little bit different from that standpoint, because some will do the state minimum of bidding, and others will do alternates and upgrades with LFIs and have different things in the building. So there's not a number, because every district's a little bit different. And some will use geothermals, so they won't have annual costs until later. They'll have a bigger replacement cost down the road, but their annual costs aren't as much. So it's hard to find a number, because there's such a different differentiation, differentiation between all the different districts and, and how they build, and what their model is for building. I wish I could find one. I've tried. We just haven't come across it yet.
Do they have that industry, Mr. O'Brien, like a square footage? I can say this is how much per square foot it is?
So I don't know. But I would imagine that if I'm a REIT, a real estate investment trust, or somebody that owns a ton of commercial real estate, I'd have a sense of what I should be spending on upkeep. You know, per square foot, because I gotta, I'm gonna bake it in the rent.
Right.
But again, that's commercial, it's not school.
Yeah. And you, you hope to find a cost per square foot, right? To say, okay, annually to maintain, we should be spending this much per square foot. If you were to look at our district back in, and again, 2013, that cost per square foot to maintain is much different than it is today, because our buildings have aged and we've grown. So for us, we'd be outside that model, right?
Kind of age adjusted.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Gordon? Do we know how many other districts do a 20-year capital plan? I think it's fantastic, by the way. Because it gives us a lot of visibility and ability to be deliberate and thoughtful in our planning, to actually try to age this thing out. And, I mean, the longer you go, you're gonna have more variability, right? Because you're making assumption upon assumption and compounding. But I think it's great to have a 20-year one.
Yeah. I, I have not found a lot when I, because again, I've tried to look for what other districts are doing. You know, that's how we come up with a lot of our energy savings, is looking at other states, looking locally at what others are doing. And I haven't come across a lot. A lot of them will have facility plans of, here's, you know, especially the growing districts around central Ohio, here's what we're building, or what we need based on our growth, where we think we're at. The closest thing we've, that I've found that, that doesn't seem to match up well, is again, those maintenance plans that the OFC requires with building. And, and those are hit or miss with whether they really maintain the facility. So that, that's the closest thing that they require them to get, but it's an attempt. But I don't know that it's a true, and it's not a 20-year for sure. But yeah, I, I think a lot of our local districts do five years, and then they do their growth plans. But they'll look at five years, because it closely matches the five-year forecast. And we try to do that five-year that we talked about in December, where we really look at that. But I don't know a ton, or a lot of them that do the, go 20 years out and say, okay, here's what we have to project. And some of them may not have that need right away, because they're not growing, or they don't have, the buildings aging. At OFCC, they built three buildings five years ago, probably is not gonna have many costs until they get 15 or 20 years down the road. They should be thinking about that, but most of them are, you know, they're, they're day-to-day with smaller staffs.
All right. Thank you very much, Josh.
You're welcome.
All right. The next item is the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Meyer.
Good evening. I do want to thank Mr. Gordon and his office for the work that they do. You know, because like President O'Brien, you said, as a district, we were intentional about a lot of things as far as forecasting and looking out. For example, our enrollment reports that we update every year, as well as the capital plan, whether it's a five-year and 20-year. And Mr. Gordon wouldn't say this, but he gets a lot of phone calls to ask him a lot of questions from people around the state. So we're glad that he's here. And then also want to give kudos to Mrs. Lenko, because they do a phenomenal job managing our food service part of the operation. So well done on that. So with that, I thought I would welcome the class of 2036. So we, this month.
That's a graduation I won't be at.
Yes. But I think we could all remember, remember when our kids were in kindergarten?
I don't know.
And it flies by so fast. It goes by so fast. But the, so our schools this week are, this month, the last two weeks, and will continue with kindergarten screening to welcome our class of 2036. So at, as of today, we have almost 1,400 kindergarteners registered for next year. And as you know, over the summer, we still have a month and a half till school starts. That will continue to grow as families continue to move in and continue to register students. Again, learning and organizational development, last, we, our last board meeting, I highlighted, highlighted C, so I wanted to highlight a few of our other summer programs. And again, this is something I think that we do really well here, as far as serving our students over the summer months. So summer programs, so we have the English Learner Summer Program. And actually, 300 students were invited to participate. The actual number participating is 135. So that's a little misleading up there, but I wanted to correct that. And then our ESY program, 416 preschool through 12th grade students that receive a small group or individual instruction based on specific IEP goals. So again, the intent is for us to provide instruction over the summer, so students don't regress over the summer, so they can stay prepared for when they come back to school in the fall. Summer Intervention Academy, so supports 131 SLC students that qualify for service. And then also our preschool summer camp, welcomes 60 to 75 preschool students. Most of these programs are three weeks in length in June, with the exception of ESY and SIA. Those are two weeks in June and two weeks in July. It, it's, again, it's trying to continue to provide instruction over the summer for when they come back to school in the fall. I had the privilege and honor as the new superintendent to welcome our first cohort of new teachers this past week. So as I mentioned, throughout the summer, we invite all of our new certified hires in to start inducting them into Olentangie. So this was a small group, and then the functions, they rotate, they rotated through the training with instructional technology communications, digital safety, payroll, and, and human resources. And we added new, the communications component, not what we have, but how to use some of those, and how to be responsible as educators in, in how we use our technology tools. So we had one, and we have three additional ones planned over the summer. This is another fun event. I wish that, I know Dr. Wallach, I think you wanted to come drive a bus. But we, so pictured here is Kevin Vangelov, myself, Mrs. Freese, and Mrs. Andress from the HR office, also Ms. Davis. They let her on the bus. And she put it back in park. Now, Mrs. Freese, I gotta admit, if, if the police were there, she might've got a speeding ticket in the school zone. But, but it was actually a really, really good event. And again, kudos to the Human Resources Department, the Transportation Department, the Communications Department that, who helped promote the event. So 18 applicants turned out that day. And again, since I've been here at, at Central Office the past eight years, the most in a one-day event that we've had. And actually, today, I just looked at the notes, or the updates. So we get an update every month where we are with drivers. So currently, we ended the school year with 159 routes. Today, we had 158 drivers, full-time, and then 10 in the pipeline. Now, we're gonna adjust, we're going through routing with the addition of Berlin Middle School, so we will increase our routes, probably, I would say, four to five routes, based on the new school year. They're going through the data, as you know, we sent out parent surveys, so they're going through the data currently, and then they'll create the routes. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're gonna be fully staffed when school starts, because I told the operations team, and the HR team, that's the expectation, that we're fully staffed. And even if we're over a couple, we're gonna be in good shape. So wanted to point that out. Some action items, we have four resignations, four administrative resignations on the agenda for tonight. So Shandra Earp, who is Supervisor of Pupil Services, she's actually going to stay with Olentangie and move to a school psych position. And then we do want to wish the best to Ben Jagger, who will be going to Johnstown as a principal. He's currently Assistant Principal at Berlin, so he'll be moving to a principal position in Johnstown. Dr. Lewis will serve in the same space as, and I don't know the exact title, Director or Ambassador to the Superintendent for Equity and Inclusion in Bexley. And then Dr. Warren will be moving on from Arrowhead to go to Columbus Public. So those are the resignations. And then you'll see quite a few administrative employment. So I want to recognize, because we have a few here. So again, I introduced you to Brittany Berger is here. So she will be leaving Oak Creek as an intervention specialist and become a new instructional technology coordinator. And then Nathan Castarina is here as well tonight. So he'll be leaving Olentangie High School as a social studies teacher and giving up coaching. That was a, a big, I guess, decision that you had to make to leave teaching and coaching. But, so he'll be an instructional technology coordinator, adding to our instructional tech team. And then we also have with us Andre Nash. So Andre Nash will be the new athletic director at Orange High School. And he's coming to us from Cristo Rey in Columbus. And then he'll serve as the new athletic director of Orange High School. And then we have some other through the restructuring with the district leadership team, some changes up there as well. So you'll see some familiar names up there. And I also want to highlight new Assistant Princip, or yeah, Assistant Principal at Shell Meadows, Elizabeth Weingard, who will be coming to us from Jonathan Alder. She's currently a principal in Jonathan Alder, and coming to us as Assistant Principal. And then I think I have one other, Suzie Garner, who's not here tonight, because she's currently resides in Kentucky, works in education in Kentucky. So she'll be a new Assistant Principal at Orange High School. And then I think I have, again, oh, Mary Ann Regal. So again, hired as a school social worker. So I think that may complete the additional social workers that we hired. And we added five again this year to serve the district. One item of note, so Kathy Schufelt has, who has been a really good administrative assistant in our pupil services department. So she will be retiring after 15 years of service here with Olentangie. So we for sure are going to miss her and wish her well. We have quite a few recommendations from the Business and Facilities Department. Again, Mr. Gordon presented on the facility rental pricing structure and increase for this year, as well as approval of the contract for a two-year term with OYAA. We have a recommendation to approve the cost of, or the cost of the district property fleet and liability insurance. So if you remember, typically, we go out every two years for requests for pricing. We did last year, but we really didn't get what we wanted. So we wanted to go back out and do our due diligence this year. So I think we filled out a total of five applications, and one came back with pricing. And this is who came back, and we're recommending Liberty Mutual. Also, this will be the last GMP number three. So we're asking for an increase of approximately $294,000 there for the roadway widening work related to the construction at new elementary 17. So as you can remember, the county requested that we widen Piatt Road there at the entrance of where Elementary 17 is being constructed. Then, this is an annual recommendation that we make. We give Mr. Gordon, Director of Business Management Facilities, the authority to auction or dispose of district items valued over $500,000. And basically, if they're no longer usable or cost-effective to repair and maintain, then we try to auction those off if we can. We have approval for a technology. This is switchgear. And again, we've talked a lot about being out front of ordering some of these items that we need for our new, new buildings because of supply chain issues. So we're recommending the approval of the network equipment for Elementary 17 there as well. And then we have two easements that we're bringing back from Liberty Township. And this has to do with the bike path in front of Liberty High School in Indian Springs. So currently, the bike path is through Liberty High School. They'll continue through Indian Springs to take it up to the library, the new library that's built there on the corner of Stites and Home Road. So important dates. And I want to make sure I announce this. So Power School is going down. So it's gonna take a summer vacation, as well as we do the, summer maintenance begins Friday, June 23rd, and will not be turned back on until, this is an important date, August 10th. So August 10th is when Power School will be, will come back up. And then obviously, everybody will be eager to see what their schedules are returning in the fall for school. Again, buildings will be closed on the July 4th holiday. And then we will be back here Thursday, July 6th, at 6:30 PM for a regular Board of Education meeting.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Meyer?
I have one.
Go ahead.
For the, the value for that disposal district, is it 500,000 or? For the, the value for that disposal district, is it five-hundred thousand or five-hundred dollars?
Five-hundred dollars.
Five-hundred dollars. I misspoke, I'm sorry.
It's like surplus.
Does it say five-hundred up there?
It's five-hundred.
It's five-hundred, yeah, five-hundred thousand.
We wanna tell people, it's worth five-hundred thousand.
Yes, exactly. Yes, thank you.
Good. Anything else? Nope. All right. Mr. Jenkins, treasure report. Do we have a class tonight, or is this just regular treasure?
Thank you. I wanted to finish up, board members, the presentation of what happens during reappraisal. It'll be three slides, maybe four, I can't remember. But it's pretty straightforward, although each slide may be packed with a little bit of heavy data here. We talked a lot about voted levies, and I teased at this past board meeting, that this board meeting would talk about, is every levy voted? And the answer is technically no. The Ohio Constitution and Ohio revised code creates something that we call inside millage. Inside millage is up to one percent of a home's taxable value. So, one percent is the same as ten mills, and we've talked a lot about mills as we've gone over this information. So, ten mills would be three-hundred-and-fifty dollars' worth of taxes for every one-hundred-thousand dollars of home value. So, this is known as the ten-mill limitation. One percent is the same as ten mills. So, that is a ten-mill, inside mill limitation, but that is shared amongst all of the subdivisions that a, overlap where a particular piece of property is, and so, an example might help. Suppose a home in Orange Township, and we're not gonna talk about that's incorporated in Westerville, let's make it easier, just a home in Orange Township. The ten mills are actually split such that currently, only eight and a half of the ten are even being assessed. So, Olentangie has five of the ten. Delaware County has one-point-four mills of the ten, and Orange Township has two-point-one-zero mills of the ten. So, quick math tells you, there's a mill and a half that Delaware County has authorized to assess that they choose not to. Now, part of the reason they choose not to is they also have a sales tax. I talked a little bit with the county auditor. They don't just not assess it. Part of it is because of goodwill, but part of it too is, is goodwill backed up by the fact that they have some other revenue sources that allow them. But if they wanted to, they have the authority to assess another one and a half mills of property taxes against properties in the district. So, as you can see, out of fifty-six-point-two total mills that we assess in this district, fifty-six-point-two effective mills, our five mills is eight-point-nine percent. So, what that means is, is that five mills does not change. So, as values increase, those five mills stay the same, and so, the other way to look at it is about eight-point-nine percent of our total millage is locked in and allows for quote-unquote "growth." So, someone might say, well, then which of our levies are voted and which are unvoted? Well, we just covered that we have five mills that do not change. So, that general inside mills stays the same. Everything else is voted and is subject to change. Now, all of these current expense levies have an automatic calculation that just simply we'll, we'll cover in a second. As property values go up, those are going to go down by a mathematical computation that's automatic. Same thing on permanent improvement. I have to kind of clarify, and I got a little footnote, all of our bond millage still gets changed, but it gets changed in such a way that the county auditor is taking a look each year at what do we need to collect to pay our debt? And in theory, you collect no more, no less. You have a reserve that you would've built up in the first couple of years, and then the county auditor will adjust the bond millage such that you get no more, no less. So, I talk about that here, that as values increase in the home, or the homes, the values of homes increase, the effective millages are decreased. For bond millage, again, that's a separate calculation, and what the auditor is shooting for is to just make sure that the total millage across all properties. And so, this is one area where the two sides of the house come together. What I mean by that is, is residential, agricultural, and commercial industrial all kinda get lumped together, and the auditor makes a determination, are we creating enough tax revenue to pay our debt? So, ultimately, what we've talked about, and our auditor, Mr. Kaitse, has been wonderful in working with us. We grow so fast that we ask our auditor normally, please leave the bond millage alone. Now, we don't do that just because, you know, we can have this huge windfall. We know we're gonna probably have to turn around, and every three or four years, issue debt for a new building, and the same thing is upcoming within the next year or so. So, ultimately, when the auditor leaves the debt service millage alone, your capacity to issue debt for your needs as you have to build more buildings is increased. And we call that strategy here, like a lot of schools do, no new millage. In fact, our last two bond issues have passed. We've had the authority to issue the debt needed to build elementary schools seventeen. We also built Berlin High School. We also built Shale Meadows and Berlin Middle School. All of those would've been issued without increasing millage. That's because the value of the property in the district is growing that fast. So, now, we're gonna put it all together, and the next slide will show three hypothetical scenarios and what actually happens to millage. And I've, I've tried to collapse it so that this is an easier chart to understand. So, remember, you got your general inside mills. Notice it doesn't change. If property goes up by thirty percent, it doesn't change. If property goes up by twenty-five percent, it doesn't change. If it goes up by twenty percent, it doesn't change. I've collapsed all of those operating levies together, so it's easier to see. So, that total voted operating mills, if I go back a slide, that is just me, sorry, two slides, that's me collapsing these items right here, from here to here. And then, I've collapsed permanent improvement. So, what happens is if we go up thirty percent, our operating millage will fall by twenty-three percent, as will our total permanent improvement. So, if you go twenty-five percent, we'll have a twenty percent decrease in millage. And finally, a twenty percent increase in value is about a seventeen percent decrease. Notice also, our gross millage is ninety-two mills. They've already been rolled back by forty percent from their gross millage. Right now, this is what we're collecting. This is what is authorized, but that shows that as property values have increased over the years, our millage has rolled back forty percent. It'll be rolled back another twenty percent if we go up by thirty percent. It'll be rolled back another almost sixteen percent if we go up by twenty-five, and it'll go down by almost thirteen percent if we go up twenty. And so, remember, I said we'll start at the end, and now, we're gonna end at the start. This was the very same slide I showed two meetings ago when we were at Orange High School, and it's why with confidence that I could say that if you had a thirty percent increase, and you have a home that goes up fifteen percent compared to that thirty, your Olentangie tax bill would actually fall by about six percent. If you have a home that goes up by twenty, when the district in general goes up by thirty, you could actually see your Olentangie taxes fall by a little bit more than one percent, almost, not quite two. And then, if your home goes up by thirty, just like the rest of the district, you won't see a thirty percent increase in taxes, it'll be just a shade under six and a half. Questions?
So, on the inside millage, who determines, or how's it determined? If you put something on a ballot, if it's inside or outside?
So, you don't put it on a ballot if it's inside, just by virtue of the fact that it's not voted. So, the Ohio revised code and the Constitution talks about one percent or ten mills. I don't know the mechanism that decides who gets what piece of it, like, why we got five.
Is it competing with Delaware County and the townships for that inside millage?
So, rather than say it's competing, it's carved out, and we all have the authority to use so much of it. Like, for example, we could say on the next tax budget, we have the authority to do five, but let's just only go ahead and do four. I, I don't know why we would do that, we wouldn't do that. Where the authority comes from that says we get five of the ten, I don't know that answer off the top of my head, I couldn't find it. So, I understand what you mean by competing for. The law somehow says that's what we're entitled to, just like it says the county was entitled to, the one and a, was it one-point-eight, whatever they were charging? They were charging?
One-point-four.
One-point-four. They could charge another one-point-five. They just choose not to.
And the question is, how do you divvy that up? Who gets the remaining one-point-five?
So, the one-point-five belongs to the, is that what you mean? Can someone, the one-point-five belongs to the county, it's theirs and only theirs. So, we, we are, we are at our max authority with five. Where it's determined that it's five, or who, or how, I could do research, I just know, I talked to the auditor, we're allotted five, we're charging five. We couldn't ask for the other one and a half, so to speak.
Does that five stay, sorry, just feedback on that. Does that five stay static, even if there are other, you know, like if that would've been in Westerville, and Westerville gets a piece, does ours still stay at five?
That's correct. So, and that's a good question. Depending on what entities are overlapping, you know, you might have a home that's in the Westerville Corporation. We still get five of the inside mills, and, and that's why I'm saying, how they figured all that out a long time ago, absolutely no clue. Because while Olentangie is constant to Genoa and Concord and Liberty and all the townships, depending on where you are, you may find different townships have different authority when it comes to how much share they have of inside mills. But wherever we are in our footprint, we get five.
And then, our inside millage is a ratio to total, that eight-point-nine percent. How is that relative to other districts? Is that a lot, is that a little?
It is probably one of the smaller amounts. When I was in Pickerington, we had four and a half inside mills, and we only had about thirty-four effective. So, it just depends on how much you have in effective mills. Over time, your effective mills always come down, because, I shouldn't say always, generally come down because property values almost always go up. Your effective mills on voted mills will keep coming down, but they stop when they get to a cumulative total of twenty. The Ohio revised code, have you ever heard of the twenty-mill floor? The twenty-mill floor is a way of saying that your voted levies keep coming down, 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 but they have a limit, and they stop at twenty mills. A lot of districts try to get to the twenty-mill floor. Why do they do that? Because then your levies go down no more, and every time you get an increase in property value, you do get a dollar-for-dollar increase. So, property values go up ten percent, your tax revenues go up ten percent. The twenty-mill floor, though, for a district like us, would be very, very challenging to get to. To get to the twenty-mill floor, you, you basically have to have status quo with no need for operating levies for several years. Just don't see us getting there.
No growth.
Built out, no, no growth.
Correct. It's correct. Yep, that's what it's supposed to reflect. Other questions?
Just a quick comment on this. I mean, this has been extraordinarily helpful, I think, both, you know, for us and for the people watching. I would consider taking all this and putting it as like an FAQ on the treasure website, just so that, you know. While I wish everyone would come in and, and take the class and, you know, and charge tuition for it, but, but I think having that information available to folks would be really helpful.
We're talking with communications today about trying to find the, I hate this phrase, and I'm about to use it, the sweet spot of how to, you know, provide enough detail, yet at the same time not cause people to glaze over, which I've already commented, I, I know, I could stand here and talk about this stuff all day. Yeah, we're, we're trying to find what that is. Spoke with both Krista and Amanda Beaman today, and we're absolutely going to put the medium most likely videos, but perhaps neat graphics to try to help illustrate what we're talking about, as opposed to mathematical formulas.
All right, very good. Thank you.
And then, my action items are just real straightforward. Donations from the Freedom Trail PTO to the Freedom Trail, assuming the principal fund or O-Seven Fund, the June eighth board meeting minutes, the final three schools, three high schools for the booster agreement, final appropriations for 2023, this is our final budget, initial budget for 2024, and then approval of the May financial report.
Great.
Thanks.
All right, while you sit down, I, I did get information, so there's eighty-five-hundred participants in OYAA that were in sports from the fall of twenty-two to the spring of twenty-three.
Say that one more time.
Eighty-five-hundred participants.
Wow.
Now, some of those participants may do multiple sports, but there were eighty-five-hundred unique participants.
And not all of them are on Olentangie Fields. Like, my son does OYAA soccer, sometimes he's at Parks and things like that, but, yeah.
So, if you think about that, they can't start until they're, I don't think you can start, say that again?
Before that, I think, first or second.
First or second.
Yeah.
So, you've got a certain group of our twenty-three thousand that are too young for it.
Yeah.
So, that's a-
And a bunch of they do. Once you get to middle school, you're done.
My son does OYAA baseball, and he's going into high school. Yeah, they have fourteen U, and I don't even know how much older they go for fourteen. Yeah, so a little bit more.
Depends on the sport.
Yeah, good numbers.
My kid is soccer.
All right, we have, we'll move on to public participation. Mr. Jenkins?
So, we have one individual who'd like to address the board this evening. Chris Glass would like to talk about support of public schools and concerns with current legislation and proposals that impact public schools.
First of all, let me just say, I'm very impressed, it's been many, retired in two-thousand-seven, so I haven't sat through meetings like this for a very long time. So, you sound like a very well-oiled machine to me.
Thank you.
Let me cut this down. My name is Chris Glass. I've been a resident of Orange Township since two-thousand-seven. I wanna thank the board for all you do for public schools. I think you guys have taken a lot of flak over the last year or so, and also wanna thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. By way of background and introduction, I am not an educator, I'm a retired HR person, but I am the product of public schools. I was raised in New York City public schools, my children were raised in Virginia's Fairfax County public schools, and three of my grandchildren went to Worthington and Grove City public schools. So, now you know why I relocated to Ohio in two-thousand-seven. I've never felt the need to attend a school board meeting in the past, until recently. In some ways, I feel like coming before you tonight is like preaching to the choir, so I apologize, I hope it doesn't come across that way. But I have been very distressed and concerned about all the negativity I've watched over the past year, and how folks like you have been harassed, shouted at, and it's made me angry about how uncivil our civil discourse has become. So, that said, I'm here to share my strong belief in our public schools and some concerns about upcoming legislation impacting education. Again, I'm a staunch believer in our public schools as a pivotal cornerstone and the foundation of our, of our democracy. But one of my concerns is the attempt of the state legislature to remove responsibility for education from those who are educated and knowledgeable about their profession to our statehouse legislators. To me, that would be a travesty, that would have deep ramifications. I think we should let legislators legislate, that's what they're supposed to do, they're politicians, and I think we ought to let the people who- And I think we ought to let the people who have the education and treat it as a profession, let them do their jobs. My second concern is that the state legislature, is the state legislature's stance on school vouchers. Recently, this has received a lot of press and attention. I've been doing a lot of reading and research. I have learned that over 90% of the students in Ohio do attend public schools and most of the remaining 10% attend private schools. Our state constitution says that public funds should be used to support a single system of common schools, what they called public schools back when it was written. The voucher program would pay for schools that don't have any regulatory restrictions. They can discriminate on any basis and they can develop their own curriculum at when, at their whim. This is in direct contrast to state requirements where you and public schools are regulated and accountable to the public and the state. Public schools accept people of all race, students of all races, cultures, genders, all physical and academic abilities. Ensuring a well-informed citizenry is an essential purpose of our public school education. And I believe the primary goal is to provide an opportunity for our children to come together from all different walks of life, to learn about our democracy, our history, and to develop a core body of knowledge that prepares them to become engaged citizens. Our constitution states very clearly that no taxpayer fund should be provided for private and/or religious schools. And my concern is, I know you can't control what the legislature is doing, but I think it has a real potential of impacting the amount of public funding you get from the state. While I support citizens having choices, I do not support my taxes going to fund charter religious parochial schools. Parents obviously have the choice. They can send their child to any school they want, but they ought to have to pay for it themselves. I don't think there's a line item in the budget for this either. And I think a lot of it's going to come out of public funding for public schools, state funding for public schools. I looked into some of the information on the financials for your school, but you all know that, so I'm not going to go over that. But the recommended increases are anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000 per student, which was significantly higher than the amount that I saw in your financial report that we pay for per student in Olin Tangi. So a parent with four children who decides to use a private parochial school could receive $20,000. And some or most of that may come from your budget, directly or indirectly. The shortfall has to be made up somehow. And I suspect one of the ways would be through school levies. I've always supported school levies. While I haven't had children in a school system for many years, I have continued to support levies because I believe that it is for the public good. However, like me, there are a large number of seniors in this county who are on limited and fixed budgets. And we have to think twice about where our tax dollars go. And I have to tell you that if all this goes through and your budget is shorted because of the voucher programs and they reduce what you get from the state, I'm not going to support that levy. And I don't know that I'm the only one that might feel that way. So I understand the budget is many hundreds of pages. They're going to be working on it till the end of the month. I've not tried to read all the detail in there. So I sincerely hope you get the funding you deserve to continue your support, to support our children in their public schools. So with that, I thank you for your time and attention.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Jenkins, will you please present the treasure action items?
Noted. Treasurer's action items A through I are all one item that you can approve with item J.
All right, so could I have a motion for treasurer action items A through I, please?
I'm going to, on the easements, I'm going to pull.
Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Then a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on the treasurer action items? All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
All right, so for the superintendent action items, we're going to pull out a couple, correct?
Yes, D. We're going to pull out D.
Let's take the ones we're going to pull out first.
Yep.
Okay.
So I'd like to present superintendent action item D for approval.
Could I have a motion for action item D?
So moved.
Then a second?
Second.
Any discussion on superintendent action item D?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
As long as it's okay, and this is something I see that you don't, but in meeting control, I simply am going to drag that down outside of, and so technically it just became E, if that's okay.
Sure.
I mean-
Whatever works.
Just as long as everyone heard that for the record.
Yes.
It's easier to drag it down and pull it out of that consent.
Got it.
Okay.
So can we specify, and I am probably significantly out of order at this point, but for seven and eight under D, because those are the ones that I feel like I shouldn't vote on. Can you specify that? Because I do want to be able to vote on the items from six. And I know I sent this late to you, Mr. Meyer. I apologize.
If you can give me a moment, I can make that happen, but it'll take me just a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I feel like it's, and this is the discussion point. So obviously I've worked on the easements and I don't think it's right that I would vote on them.
So we can do it in two votes? I'll include one through six. And is it now E, Mr. Jenkins?
Give me just a moment. This is easements with Liberty Township, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
There are seven and eight currently.
And I'll make it pretty in just a second, but right now I'll just copy it.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay. This is what counts for high drama at board meetings. You've got to get it right.
And so we want seven and eight, correct?
Correct.
I'm sweating. I'm getting like all nervous. I'm going to get expelled.
Well, we have talked about that.
Good thing we only have one meeting in July.
Yeah, I know.
Those are the last two exhibits, correct? Easement one and two?
Yep, correct.
We pulled those out last time, I think.
You can pass out more snacks.
I was just saying.
See what he does.
Anything to get kids to eat chickpeas, goodness sakes. I didn't say, what's a vegetable?
Yeah.
And now I'm going to delete those two items off of D.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. So it's Tuesday board meetings.
Was there anything else that needed adjusted while I'm at it, or will those be the only two?
Just those two.
Do we have to modify the motion then?
So, yeah, does a motion will die because nobody seconded?
Yeah, it can.
I don't, if the agenda's the same and it's-
Let me.
Isn't the motion on yours? We have a part of it here.
Yeah, I don't think anything's even been moved yet so far on the superintendent items.
No, I thought they moved the treasurer items.
Superintendent items.
So we're-
Okay, sorry.
The treasurer actions are approved.
Yeah, the easements are on the superintendent. So now, just so everyone knows, we have A, B, C, and D, but D now has been stripped of the two easements, which will technically now be item F, because E will be adopting A through D, assuming there's no other changes.
Okay, so let's do that. So could I have a motion? Could I have a motion to approve superintendent actions A through D?
You can still say D. That's correct.
A through D, please. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on superintendent action items A through D? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, could I now have a motion to approve superintendent action item F?
Yes.
Is that correct? F?
That's right.
I'll present superintendent action item F as amended.
Yes, perfect.
For approval.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Could we, any discussion on the superintendent action item F? All right, Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Actually, discussion, do we have that as a new item? I'm just trying to make sure that this is-
So the way Todd presented it was superintendent action item as amended, so the agenda should be good. And so it's a new item.
Okay. Then yes.
Mr. Lester?
It's good to be clear. That's fine.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Epstein.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Is that everybody? Wow. Those work. All right, now-
My presentation was tough.
I'll entertain a motion to enter an executive session as provided by the Ohio revised code to consider the employment of public official. And so let's get the motion done. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, we will only return to adjourned. There'll be no action taken when we return.
Mr. Lester?
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, are you ready? Good. All right, I will call the meeting back to order at 8:37 PM. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Um, hold on, I'm gonna write that down. Two W's?
Yep.
Not pulling anybody out.
No, don't pull it out. Um, all right, so we have Wallach with the motion. Why is it the second?
Uh, that, no.
Flip it.
Flip that.
Flip it, okay. Flip it. All right, any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All right, seeing none, please call the roll. Mr. Biden, yes?
Yes.
Dr. Dabich?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wy?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
It's unanimous, five zero. We are adjourned.